During this past week, I had some thoughts about how to move forward with the comp plan. And one of the things that I came up with and that I've kind of acted on is that we will have, Barb Fisher will now be the lead for the comprehensive plan review.
Okay.
I will continue, we will all continue to be part of. But I had talked to Deb when I was in last week about this. And I just felt that chairing Planning Commission, keeping things going here, and to try and stay, I want to talk about the time that needs to be devoted to the comp plan, it's a little much. And I thought, Barb, I think Barb has the expertise, I think she has organizational skills, and in speaking to her, she'd like to challenge.
That's good, that is good.
So she had, she has agreed that she will do this. And when the original comp plan was written, there was actually an ad hoc committee that was set up to work with the consultant at that time. And I think we're going to gradually phase into that. You know, we as Planning Commission will still be involved. And any meetings for comp plan will still be prior to Planning Commission, although Barb, one of the things she told me on Sunday when we sat down and talked, is she would actually like to add a second meeting for comp plan work.
You remember before this whole thing happened, we were meeting twice a month?
Yeah. Well, especially if you're pulling in, you know, the committee is representing a variety of stakeholders or interests, then, you know, having additional meeting times, or even something where you could go over an hour, you know, because especially if they're going to block something off on their calendar, you know, that they're doing once a month, you know, there's different ways to do it, but you can be respectful of their time and, you know, just try to schedule them.
So I told Jess, and then I called Mark on holiday and told him about this, and he seems agreeable to it and felt that this is the direction we should be going with it. So I told Barb she will be working more directly with Jess. I said, I don't know how long Mark is going to be deeply involved, because he had said he would like to move on to some other projects, but for now...
Well, yeah, but I will absolutely stay connected with this. This is too big and too important for us, so...
So I assured Barb she would not be out there, hanging out there, knowing that, you know, there should be a time that the four of us would get together prior to our next meeting to kind of put a little more definition to how we move forward with this. And with the idea, do we want to bring more people in? Do we want an ad hoc committee to work on this? And Barb asked me what ad hoc meant, and I said, I really don't know, but I said, they are committees that are set up for a specific job, and once that job is complete, that committee dissolves. I said, so we'd be a group who would just be brought together to develop the comp plan. So at some point, I'd like to be able to set up a meeting with the four of us prior to our next scheduled meeting. And as far as scheduling, two meetings a month, we're already into October, and I assume that to add that, it would have to be advertised. So we would be looking at advertising maybe a November, December meeting. I think this is something we may discuss with the four of us. I will tell you right now, you're getting into the holidays. Granted, we don't know what the holidays are going to be like, but to try and add an extra meeting in at this time of the year, I can see us, I can see us beginning in January.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, we still have a couple of these meetings, too. We're going to have an hour to maybe come up with direction, or come up with a game plan for when, if we want to start these meetings in January, you would have a pretty good idea of how you're going to do it, who's going to be there.
And that's tonight. That's what we want to do, is kind of walk down the outline and go through that. And hopefully by January, we'll have the planning and zoning manager on board here that can then, from the staff side, take the lead role on this project, so...
Yeah, because Barb sent me an email, which I didn't reply to until later today. She said, are we still going to be dealing with the items in Chapter Seven, which is what we were looking at? I said, probably at least for tonight, but I also felt that tonight we would probably decide where we're moving from there.
Yeah.
Okay, so Barb is very comfortable now.
I feel like that's a lot of work.
So, do you want to let Jess and more kind of guys here tonight?
Sure, yes. I was thinking starting next month.
Yeah, I told her, I said, you're not going to have to do it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Barb, yay! This is awesome. So just to put to it easy, we'll communicate beforehand, and meeting facilitation can go kind of back and forth. You're loading?
Yeah, well, it decided to go ahead and reboot the entire system and run updates, so...
Perfect. Yes.
One of the things we could do while we just wait is, do we want to talk about who maybe potentially we want to have on this ad hoc meeting, the membership? I know that Mark and I talked yesterday, when I've done this before, and I'm sure Mark's done it before, I always go to the existing boards and committees first. So the most recent time I did this, I had two elected officials, two planning commissioners, two folks from historic preservation, and then a resident at large. I would have liked to have more resident at-large folks.
How large of a group?
What about like business?
Absolutely, business, yep.
Business group.
How large of a group would you...
Not that large, because your goal is not to, you don't want to get into that, ask anything about committees, but we want to make sure that we're getting a diverse cross-section of opinions and experiences. So it would be great if you could have a school student, maybe someone involved with student outreach, who could come in and sit and talk with us. It would be great to have somebody from recreation, a business owner. When I did it in Springfield, our resident at large was a business owner, a resident, and a member of the elected body, so he...
Well, not to, not to just inflate this, but, you know, what about, say, like, from the tourism side of things, you know, not to drag Hope into one more thing, but would she be somebody that would be able to do that? Because she sees the town from a different angle.
I think what we have to do is ask, and that was the other thing, would it make sense to have somebody from the Borough Council make the initial ask? Is that...
I would probably leave that up to your hands as a manager.
So I think we should, we should pick a councilperson who, I don't know, attends these meetings. I can't think of anyone who comes to these meetings and sits on councils there.
There you go.
Oh, you're here. Hey!
How would you want to have it done?
So in all honesty, I mean, this is, this is your area, looking at economic development. I think you could be the great, as a lead for Borough Council, and then if you want to, you and I could get together and reach out to the list of people, I think that'd be a great way to do it.
Awesome.
And you as an elected official to sit on that ad hoc.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
And one of the things I would say is, this is definitely a time commitment for people to serve on committee, and if someone's not sure that they can do it, one of the things we can do is bring them in via a stakeholder meeting or two, so set up a time to just specifically talk to them.
Okay, okay. Interesting.
Would this, would this meeting be something in addition to what we do here?
Which meeting?
The ad hoc.
Well, I think the ad hoc would take the place of this. So the full Planning Commission wouldn't necessarily be all involved in this, but the ad hoc committee could meet an hour before Planning Commission, or we'd have our own times. And then I think that would free up the rest of the Planning Commission to focus on just the planning side of it.
Okay, so it would be like tonight, only there'd be more people here?
Yeah.
Okay. As I was looking through the government pages earlier and just reviewing some things, I wondered if we should hear from these people, or maybe they would do well on the committee, would be someone from the Board of Health, the Columbia Land Bank Advisory Committee, like someone from that committee, someone from PAR, the Streetscape Committee, zoning and public safety, like, these are all things that our comprehensive plan will be focusing on, so would it be beneficial for us to hear from the people who have been working in those areas?
Yeah, like, would that be like stakeholder type meetings?
Well, yes, it could be either. It really just depends on whether or not, so if you want somebody from PAR, is there someone on PAR that's willing to come here? I think that's a great perspective.
There is no PAR agreement.
Yeah, eventually there will be.
But they're proud of council's heart.
Council's heart.
Bad example, bad example.
It's being rebuilt as we speak. No, but in all honesty, put that aside, that's a good example. That's, those are the kind of people, and I see a big chunk of them being actually on the ad hoc or the steering committee that would drive this forward. I think that's the kind of team, because I think having that broad perspective across the board on this team would bring that balance in as we are trying to build this document, so that we don't build in silos, and I will fight to the end of this process to stay away from the silent mentality of this. And so when you're talking about parks and open space, you want to hear from the Shade Tree Commission, you want to hear from the businesses and how trees can get in the way sometimes, or how trees can be of benefit. And so we got to have that cross-pollination, if you will, of the different disciplines to make it really a good plan. So I think this is the right way to go.
Do we currently have a downtown business group?
We have two. We are officially with the Chamber, but the Emergence Association is also the, kind of the up-and-coming forming group now that's coming on board. So I think one or both of them. I would definitely ask Hope from the Crossings to be there, because she covers a big part of it. And I think a big focus really is going to be the tourism, if you will, recreation and tourism side is going to be important as we move forward. So I think Hope would be fantastic, or Allison, or one of them from the team down there would be great. Shade Tree, we can ask Amy or someone on her board to come over, I think that's a good call. In terms of public safety, I would, I'm going to, a lot of comment out of you, because I know what you're basically going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the chief to appoint somebody, because he's busy. But, you know, that's a good way to empower one of the other officers to get involved and, you know, to take a leadership role and do something like that. I think that'd be a good public safety one side, and I think get Jamie, who's our emergency management coordinator, possibly to sit on as well. I think that'd be a good...
Jerry.
Okay, sorry.
Jerry.
Jamie from the, yeah, Columbia Life Network. Yeah, so Jay Barner, and then Jamie Weigand, get those two in. Who else?
Would you be looking at someone from Chi?
That might be a good idea.
Interesting.
They've become deeply involved in this community.
Yeah.
And I would tell you, I feel they have a vision for this community that other people never...
Yeah, they need perspective, because they made a decision, they got here, so I mean...
Right, they have really committed themselves to this.
They might be, they might be a really great stakeholder.
To this community, with what they've done with the building up there, what they're doing here with the market house, they've got a, they've got an interest in this community going on.
Find out what's the deal, like, what's their plan, what, you know, what's their vision, you know, what art are they playing in the, in the long term for the community? You know, that's really interesting. Because that was one of the things when we were, last year, when we were meeting, that was one of the topics that I think we kind of had got to and never really got an opportunity to, you know, get our arms around, because the kind of the livability, the social service, the, you know, kind of the support framework for the, you know, the town, and understanding what the vulnerabilities are, what the needs are. You know, they've obviously researched a lot about the town, and not just, okay, well, you know, we'll show up and operate something, like, they've invested a lot of money, too. So, I mean, those decisions aren't just at the spur of the moment, so, you know, they obviously have a vision and how they can help the town.
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, those are some of the people, some of the areas that we need to look at. And one of the things with increasing tourism and bringing people into the town, you need to have some residents, because, like, even with the, I forget what the project was, and there was somebody I knew who rented in town, and they said, the way things are going in town, I'm not going to be able to live in this town, because it's going to get too expensive. You know, so there's another side, that if, if this becomes the new Lancaster, or the what-have-you, the values go up, which would be very nice, but there's people here that we need to keep and be able to think about them.
It's true, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So do we have some names to put with any of those, or...
I don't think so.
With any of the ones we came up with?
Did you mention Jamie from Life Network?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think he would be a good advocate for that people group that you were just talking about.
Well, and he's the Chair of the Board of Health, so that's a good connection for those.
Okay.
Your, your own personal networks here in the Borough may also be an opportunity, because don't forget, like you said, residential, the resident involvement is critical. So that's the other thing I would say, I would ask that elected and appointed officials think about the folks in their, your neighbors, you know, other people that you could ask to be involved. Jenny was hard, it's really difficult, everybody's just super busy.
I was just thinking my actual neighbor.
I also think it would be a good idea if, upon inviting these people to be a part of this committee, that they really have an idea of what they're getting into. Like, give them the mission statement and the vision for the comp plan. Let them know how much of a commitment, as far as time goes, what you expect them as individuals to bring to the group.
We could, I can prepare some sort of welcome packet, and maybe we could do a super brief orientation on the first time we get together. Because some of those things we won't necessarily have right when they join, because we're going to develop them, you know, and we want the vision and mission, but overarching, you can say what the, you know, the goal of that document is. Yeah.
And the thing, you know, the thing about this is, you know, another kind of selling point is, it's funny to think of it this way, but, I mean, we are supposed to, it's our, it's the municipality's responsibility to have a comprehensive plan, right? And so if we're going to do this, you know, we want people to be able to contribute so that they can shape that, because it is, it's official. You know, we, the community has done a fair amount of different studies and reports and plans.
Well, we're, you know, we're going to talk about that as soon as we get whatever hair...
There we go.
It's a perfect segue. It's almost perfect.
Justin, you just know how to. You just know how to.
We exchanged information through Derek. He said, okay, here's what you, you got to lop up the softball like that.
Jessica, do you have a timeline then, and what commitment you are? Yeah, so what I'm working on is 12 months, starting, I started, I was thinking of starting now in October, but we might push that, because we're going to have to have the ad hoc committee in place. So maybe 12 months, starting from January, that would be the work. I think approval or adoption would be outside of that 12 months, but we will have a final draft by the end of that 12-month time period. I am thinking we'll have to average about one meeting with the committee a month, because I think we've identified nine or 10 different sections to work on, so while, while we work on getting a committee pulled together, I'm going to spend now, to the end of the year, getting as far ahead as I can on some of the data analysis, because that stuff that I can do without public involvement, pull those pieces together, and be slightly ahead so that when we meet up in January, we're going through the orientation, what the scope of the project will be, and maybe getting into a little bit of demographic analysis, that or land use, I'm not sure which one we want to start with. And maybe during the several months, we'll have a break. It depends.
I just realized, I didn't start the meeting to get Brad and Tiffany.
They couldn't make it.
Yeah, they were going to call in, though. They can't do it, they're not going to remote in either?
No.
Oh, yeah.
They, they passed the question. Sorry, I don't believe it was, I think they got through.
They might have, I might have missed it. Okay, so we don't have to...
No.
It's us.
I was sitting there thinking, Mark, we just talked about this, and I forgot you weren't in the room.
Mark, we...
My bad.
We would review and hit fullscreen.
Okay, that's fine. Maybe. Can I do it? Can I do it? No, no, update, no!
Oh, feathers, that was an update. Okay, good. All right, here's the title, there's nothing new there. All right, so here are the, here are the, basically, our table of contents, and what Mark and I have reviewed over probably two meetings or so. So first, here's what I'm thinking about community outreach, because there has been quite a bit of outreach done already. And obviously, this can be tweaked to, to work for anything, but I'm thinking about six to eight stakeholder interviews. Those interviews, I was looking to do with just large community stakeholders, probably folks like CHI, maybe some other businesses in the area, and do that, strength opportunities, assets, and, what was the last one? AR, so what?
Strength, opportunities.
Assets and...
Results.
Results. So I'm going to walk through that analysis. Usual stakeholder interviews are reserved for folks that just wouldn't have enough time to really participate any other way. We're also going to incorporate some small electronic surveys that can be done on mobile devices, and we can advertise those through the Borough's social media, but small, we're thinking a minute, two minutes tops, and we'll probably do them on specific plan elements and aspects, trying to prioritize maybe what's been done. And then, of course, public meetings. We're obviously going to have an ad hoc committee, those meetings will be open to the public, but more specifically, I can see us doing one specific community meeting, sort of March, April, once we have a lot of data pulled together, we know the direction that the Borough is heading in, and we want to get some initial opinions, and then do a little follow-up presentation of the plan and its components. And then obviously, there's also, it has to be some meetings with the Borough Council. So we still have to flesh out, just specifically, when those meetings are. And feel free to interrupt me at any point in time with questions. So the next component to this, and Justin, this is what I just said, hold on, we're going to get to it. So one of the biggest components of this is going to be just how to use it in terms of the document, and how it's going to fit with all of the planning efforts that have been done to date. So really, what we have to do is think about, how is this comprehensive plan update going to move all of those other planning projects forward? And if they're not, why isn't it? And it's, and it could be because that recommendation just doesn't, it just no longer makes any sense, but we should identify, you know, why. Next, this is more informational, just something kind of a value add for residents. We want to cover the government structure, the different boards and authorities, boards and commissions, I mean, you know, Mark, you said over a map of the Borough's wards, that would be perfect to put into this document, sort of everything that a resident would like to look at. Maybe we could do some sort of handing, kind of infographic, and put it on the website, people could pull up that information really quickly. We have an element on land use, cataloging changes that I've heard from the last time we did an existing land use, and then updating it for the future land use. I'm not sure what primarily would have changed a whole lot, except for maybe the Guinness Airport, right?
Well, we did the rezoning at the end of last year, that kind of expanded the downtown area, and I think that's significant.
Okay, so things like that will incorporate into that. And that's kind of why I say maybe land use first, because it's not going to, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a very large discussion, unless there are some, unless there's just a lot of organic conversation around land uses themselves. Moving on to the community profile, this will be your demographic analysis, we'll cover the basics of population growth and trends, diversity in the population, the aging population, we'll cover income for individuals and households in the Borough, we'll cover changes in employment within the industries, so on and so forth, just try and get a really healthy look of what is happening with this community right now. Interestingly enough, because it's 2020, and because this is the census year right now, this community profile will be using 2010 data and 2018 American Community Survey data. This, one of the recommendations coming out of this comprehensive plan update will be to update that community profile in about three, three to five years, when the 2020 census data has all been tabulated. So really, the community profile is just going to give us a general overview, and hopefully, everything that we think is happening will be borne out when we do the projections again five years from now. The housing analysis, again, some information with regards to the census relative to changes in tenure, changes in total number of units, the age of the housing stock. We're also going to include a conditions analysis. So we will drive the Borough, come up with a standard format for conditions, you know, excellent, all the way down to absolutely substandard, and then kind of position of, try and figure out where the Borough is in that mix, so that we can have some recommendations to preserve the housing stock. Transportation, we have some recommendations on some previous planning work that can be included in this from a transportation standpoint. Outside of that, I think I would be relying specifically on feedback from the Council with regards to just, you know, problem areas, with regards to the public works group, and anybody else that has a sort of a flavor of what's going on in the transportation standpoint. Are there any large projects that are sort of waiting in the wings from a transportation standpoint, besides the Gateway?
So, yeah, we have the, the upgrades of the 462 bridge, and that emphasizing the bike ped mobility. We have the Walnut Street project, which is going to be focused on, you know, transportation improvements, kind of a complete streets model, bringing it in, and that's going to set the stage for other big projects that we have. And I think those are going to kind of be the catalyst to push forward, because one of the things we had talked about a long time is, is looking at ways to improve walkability around town, which is going to get into ADA accessibility and other issues. We want to make sure that we're a bikeable community, and that the facilities are, not just the roads are safe, but the facilities that start and stop points are available for people to, to cycle to locations, and encourage that.
And we did adopt complete streets, so we have to look at incorporating that.
Were we, was there something going on this year about weight funding?
Yep.
Or is it, okay. So, I mean, that kind of goes into transportation.
Absolutely. And economic development, and...
Yeah, 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 because, you know, obviously, if the study is identifying where the weight funding goes, then that's saying, well, that's where the people that need to know where to go are at, so that's where you need to make sure that it's smooth.
Right.
You know, to get, you know, so that would inform what kind of transportation improvements are needed, right?
Absolutely.
You know, these are the routes that, you know, folks are using, you know, make it bike-friendly or whatever.
Yeah, and even, even going back a step, one of the things that Jess and I have been talking about, too, is the idea of introducing kind of the neighborhood subset of, of the community, and even looking at maybe possibly breaking the community down into, into neighborhood boundaries, and saying, you know, this is downtown, this is uptown, this is the industrial district... and even looking at maybe possibly breaking the community down into, into neighborhood boundaries, and saying, you know, this is downtown, this is uptown, this is the industrial district ward, whatever, you know, we come up with.
They already have that.
The name. But, but put some, put a little structure and definition around it, yeah. Because the people who live here, they know the names of them, and that's what Jess and I were talking about. We need a few people to tell us what they are, or where the, about the boundaries are. And then put a little structure into it, and then, you know, find ways to honor those neighborhoods and get the neighborhoods energized, and the residents and the property owners in those neighborhoods to get involved in that. And try to build some neighborhood pride up in there, you know? I've seen communities where they had a, a Christmas holiday light decorating competition, and, and, you know, each neighborhood voted for their best one, and then all the, the top choices then got put into a citywide effort, and then you, you picked the best house, and then, sure enough, next year, everyone upped their game. They're like, oh, no, you know, Frank's not going to beat me this year, and, you know, I'm taking it down. So that kind of, that builds that energy, you know? Have doing a, a Saturday morning in the spring, a neighborhood cleanup, and, and we go through and clean the alleys and, and trim the bushes, and, and if you do it citywide, it gets almost too big. But if you start targeting certain neighborhoods in certain areas, people like that and they get involved in it. So kind of build that synergy into the, kind of the community profile element of this, and create that.
Okay, so economic development, lots and lots and lots of stuff has been done on economic development. So I think a, a big portion of this part of the study will be to identify all of those resources, number one. And then sort of go out to market with our appointed and elected officials and our residents, and just make sure that everything that was identified as a strategy, as a priority, still remains so. Because there were something like 200 recommendations, I think I counted, from an economic development standpoint. And those need to be, we need to chip away at that, baby steps, and organize it. Justin, did you get that information from our survey? You were just talking about plans, planned, previous planning exercises. As recent as, I think the last, the oldest document I looked at was 2013, maybe, and it's...
2020, yeah.
It's like a dozen documents. There's been a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have the economic.
Well, even that strategic economic development plan.
That was 12 years ago.
We were holding meetings after that on a monthly basis, knocking away and seeing, you know, that we were doing things that were identified.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to know how much of that got accomplished.
There was a lot of things, there was a lot, a lot in there. I, I'd be curious to...
I think one of the things we talked about actually is going through those studies, kind of doing a spreadsheet, listing all the goals and recommendations in those studies, and kind of a status of where they are. And then it kind of, it is hard when you have all these studies to put it all together. You put it together, and I know Jeff was starting to work on that before he left, is kind of, what are the highlights of the different studies and chapters that we have? So let's, let's formalize that a little bit, put it into a spreadsheet, where we stand, and then move forward.
What would be interesting is seeing what things cross over to what we heard from the people at, at the groups.
Exactly.
Right.
And that's how the library and the retirement community, you know, we met with different groups or different areas and got their feedback. I'd be really interested to see, you know, if like the things that they appreciated or wanted to see done, or concerned about, and some of those action steps from the older plans. It'd be, I, I would be curious to see how many things are still, you know, just didn't get taken care of or weren't able to come up with a, a way to deal with it.
Or if they were given, identified in those plans.
Yeah, yeah, they may not have been at that point.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a fantastic exercise to go through, because there, there's been a lot of good work that's been done, and there's, there's a lot of still very relevant material in those studies. And one of, one of the comments that was said to me several times when I got here was, you know, all we do is studies and studies and studies, but nothing gets done. Well, that can be a perception, but if we lay it out and say, you know, you know, back in, in 2010, we did this study, and look, we accomplished all of these points, and then these moved forward, and these are still active, and, and in 13, we did this study, we did this, and this one, we did this study, and, and these things are moving forward, then it gives people a different picture.
And it doesn't, I mean, rarely, 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 rarely is there a study or a plan that... It, the things just kind of fade out, you know, as far as meeting every month, and, you know, we're checking everything off, and we're following these, and we're making up this list, you know, every month, and we're going down the line. You know, that, that fades out over time.
Sure.
Which underlines the importance of refreshing, you know, re-going, starting the process over, you know, every 10 years or whatever, a little more frequently, because then you can build up some momentum and get some more things done. I think it's just the natural cycle of it.
Right.
Maybe with the exception of the park, the Riverfront Park maybe.
Yeah.
Because you guys are staying very busy on that.
We just keep going.
I know, that's, that's one of the rare circumstances, you know, it's, but the general rule is it fades out over time.
And that basically is an ad hoc committee.
Yes.
It's just a group of us who have gotten together, and we just keep going, right? That's like in the, the economic development. Get to the matrix back here. That's like, there's some of my habits here underway, underway, complete, complete, you know, perfect. But yet we're actually minutes from meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I'm, I'm going to keep pushing, and, and council's heard me say this quite a bit too, is we're, we're going to keep celebrating our successes. We can, we can focus all day long on things we wish we would have done better and differently, but rarely does that truly lead to improvement. The only thing it does is get us to, you know... I don't, we don't need that. We need to focus on our successes, what we've done right, and, and then, and that's why I like the, the store methodology, because then, then we say, okay, maybe some of these didn't, but then what are we going to do in the next cycle that, that we are going to pick up on this, or maybe, you know what, that was a great idea back then? We don't need that now. Times have changed, we don't need this goal anymore, let's, let's save no longer relevant, and then move on from it.
But so much has, has taken place since some of those studies, you know, even when you think just about the Riverfront Park and some of the improvements in whether it's the streets or whatever, you know, the going down Flumby Ave or Legastra Ave. You know, I mean, at some point, that was a vision, and then it took, it happened. There's been a lot that has taken place. And sometimes you just have to recalibrate and, you know, okay, what's the, what's the plan now? We build off of some of the successes, but you still have these issues to deal with.
Right.
There's nothing wrong with hitting the, the refresh, the reset button.
No, it's not, and, and one of the things that you're going to see, and we'll get to this at the end, is the Action Implementation Plan. And what I have found successful is you do that every two years. So you do an action plan every two year, two years, it says, okay, here's what we've accomplished, and here is in the next two years, what we think are reasonable goals to, to go after in this timeframe.
There you go.
So, anyway, sorry.
Any other questions?
No.
No? The next component is health and recreation. So as it says, I would imagine this component would have whatever health data we can acquire for the borough relative to the population, and then breaking out recreation in terms of national standards, and how well we relate to those national standards, and, you know, identify what the needs are here in the borough for the different cross-sections of our population.
That's where I would see CHI being able to provide you with information. But I'm sure they've got the information for that though.
And so does Jamie. Jamie has a lot of good stats and data on that.
We have, following that, agricultural and community resources. This will also be an informational component, but also include recommendations for how we can better connect the dots and provide services to the residents who need them. But first and foremost, identifying all of the services and resources that are here in the borough. Making sure that there's, you know, an easy way for residents to find what they need. And then just kind of build upon that and start making recommendations to, to further those connections and resources. Sustainability and resiliency, Mary, you had a copy right before we got here, and this is where MS4 is going to fall into the comprehensive plan.
Looking at the different plans that we were looking at, I said, you know, we didn't list MS4 as being one of them to...
So anything that has to do with sustainability and resiliency for the borough. So we'll get into hazard mitigation, talk about things like sustainability for our agriculture, environmental conservation and protection, and just making sure that everything that we're doing is working with our MS4 brethren. Food deserts, something else we can discuss in sustainable, sustainability and resiliency. And then we get into the Action Implementation Plan, and then the different maps that we'll develop as a part of this effort.
I went through the maps that you posted for Delray Hues. That was interesting how things were all listed for the different things. I don't think we need to worry about the rising ocean.
Yeah, it's too low a rise.
Yeah, we need to worry about coastal.
Title surge.
Well, I mean, if you do see a title surge, we're in trouble.
The way it may push more people inland.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in essence, this is the skeletal framework that Mark and I have been able to put together to kind of guide the process.
Can you provide us a copy of that?
Absolutely. So I think moving forward, it's a little, what, it's a little bit, we need to figure out how we want to move that ad hoc committee forward. And then, as I said, what I'll do is, while that ad hoc committee is getting pulled together, I will start doing some of the demographic analysis and getting that data pulled together for us.
I was thinking about the demographics. If there's a census in 2020, do you think that because of the COVID, it's going to throw that all out of whack as far as economy, employment, things like that?
Any, I'm, maybe, I don't know. We're, that's why, one of the reasons why it's so important that, you know, the census has been trying to get as many people to take it as possible.
Well, and, I mean, but you can, the Tax Collection Bureau has all the, by year, the median income and the median...
It'll, it'll change, like for that...
It's like income and the other thing, and they have it year over year compared to...
They do, they use, and then they use the American Community Survey on non-census years to try and give us kind of an indication to where things are moving. But the 100% data that they're collecting now is really just a snapshot of time.
Yeah.
So will it impact the numbers? Probably people's household incomes will be down, but what'll happen is as we recover the American Community Survey information as we move forward.
I see.
We'll show something, hopefully it'll show a recovery.
Well, yeah, because it is nice to see, you know, when it talks about, you know, they have a lot more depth in, in that, you know, the full census data. But at least we'll have that moving forward to see what the returns are from that county, you know, to see the change, and especially relative to other municipalities locally, to see whether that's a little lagging or, or whatnot, you know, as far as...
There's a lot of great data out there, a little, a little scraping. Is Rose still at the county?
I don't know. There's only like 10 people that work there now.
I guess, is she still there? They, they had a woman, Rose Wong, who was just an amazing data miner. And if she's still there, maybe we can engage her to get some, pull some data together for us.
I'll talk to Alex, I know what, what they can do for us.
You can use that when you say data science too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Am I understanding this correctly, that table of contents, that's the table of contents for the comprehensive plan, is that correct? Can you go back to the previous screen? I'm just connecting some dots in my thinking.
We can't go back.
We can't go back.
Can't go back.
Oh, okay. Community outreach.
I struggle with the Adobe thing.
So government, land use, housing, transportation.
Again, these are just our, our starting points.
Where would education be?
Education, I think that's always under cultural, community, is there.
I think, yeah, we put it under...
Cultural, okay.
Faith-based organizations, health and humans.
Or do we put it under community profile?
No.
We, we said educational data relative to the borough community, so we talked about it, it needs to be there. We, we wrestled with whether education should be its own chapter, and maybe we pull it out and tease it out and make it its own.
Yeah, it just may depend on how deep the conversation to get, the information is, yeah.
It should have been in either, it should have been in the community and cultural resources or reference data. If it's not there, then I have to...
It seems like it could be, because education is your, a community resource.
Mm-hmm, that's why you put it there.
Yeah, I'll put it back, it, for some reason, it got left out, I apologize.
And again, it can be its own chapter, or it can just be a sub under that, it was, focus on it.
That you, that you have a hard time just stuffing it into one area.
Because education needs to be broader than just the public schools.
Yeah.
And where are things like sewage and drainage?
Infrastructure.
Infra, where is that?
That would be just...
Under land use?
Well, some of that can go under land use. You know, we can add, we, we teased out all of the things in the, in the first chapter, and...
Maybe sustainability?
Yeah, because a, a lot of that, there, there's not going to be a lot of goals and objectives that come out of this. More disinformation, so, you know, we could, we can...
So we're going to prepare a drainage and stormwater system map, that more than likely will go under sustainability and resiliency. And we'll probably identify a lot of facts, but like Mark said, I'm not sure what sort of goals and outcomes we generate for, for that just because of the subjects.
It would just be something that gives, you know, the reader or the, you know, whoever's implementing it, a better idea as to what the systems are, and how they, how they relate. I guess the, the sustainability part is, you know, what are the things that would threaten those pieces of infrastructure?
Yeah.
Well, and a good example is just time. You know, the infrastructure is old, and for the borough, or the most suburban areas, so absolutely. Although, I don't know that, does the borough have the same situation that some of our suburban areas are having with all the developments that were done in the 40s and 50s with the corrugated metal pipe rotting out?
We are with our stormwater system.
With your storm power?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one now, or we're chasing down, we're going to have to put on next year's capital projects down by the river.
We should have concrete earlier.
Yeah.
Like up until the 80s.
Yeah. So stuff like, stuff like that, if you know particular hotspot areas, we want to identify them in sustainability so that we're letting folks know that this has to be, this has got to be put on our community horizon.
And some areas jumped from brick gutters to underground plastic pipes.
And we still have brick.
Just totally jumped, you know, that whole...
We still have some brick gutters here in town.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We still have some areas where your stormwater is surface water running. It's not even underground.
Yep. And that's not a bad thing.
Numbered streets, you didn't used to want to try driving across vast because of each of the alleys. Now, a lot of this has been eliminated, but that was it for a while.
Yeah.
And as far as the underground type of utilities, the, the stormwater is the only thing that the borough is responsible directly for, because last that has a sanitary, the water company's privately owned, gas company. Does their digging.
But still relevant to the comp plan. Looking at all those, whether we own them or not, it's still...
Well, those might be staple in the conversation.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, that's how far do your gas lines extend within the borough?
Right, and all things to look at, and, and what are, what are some, some needs or wants that we have in, in expanding...
From a utility provider's perspective, what, what are, you know, not only what their plans are, but what, what are their concerns? What are their challenges? And maybe strategic areas, or maybe something broad.
Right.
And there's, there's portions of the, of the borough that do not have natural gas available.
Right.
It's not there.
Looks really good.
Or you feel a bit of war.
Well, it looks like, like everything is coming into place and to order, like you can get a picture of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and thank you, because that was really the goal of what we wanted to bring tonight, is to start a, a framework to, to really start building off of, and, and you'll hear Jess and I say all along, this is, this is fluid. to, to really start building off of, and, and you'll hear Jess and I say all along, this is, this is fluid. These are just our starting talking points. If we feel like we want to add something or remove something to a different area or shut things around, that, that's going to happen during this process as we walk through all this. But this is, this is stuff that, that the nerd inside me gets all excited about, this is stuff I love doing. Because this is, it's so exciting when you, when you have the time and energy to put into this, and then you see things come together, and then, like you guys are talking about, you start seeing them come to reality down the road as we, we work. That's neat.
Good.
Welcome, good sir.
So, we have a couple of minutes, sorry. Oh, you were waving. So, with a couple of minutes we have left, I guess our next steps are for the four of us to meet and put together kind of our next steps on, uh, staying together with the ad hoc committee.
Far as.
Yeah, I would pull air. Let's, we can schedule a time that he's available, usually Friday afternoons or after a certain time in the day. We meet early, like four, five o'clock, and then we'll pull the committee together then to have the kind of talk.
Are you good then?
Four, five o'clock, depending on the day.
Right, and then I think for all of us, we'll find a day that works, and then.
Barb is homeschooling for, uh, Daniel.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll find a time that works for everybody, um, and then start building the, the steering committee up and get that going, and in the meantime, we'll keep working in the background, getting this data collection and find the gaps in the data that we need to start filling in.
Do you think we'll have a meeting in November?
I would say let's, let's plan on it, keep the momentum going, if we don't have enough, then we'll cancel it, but.
The, the previously scheduled.
Yeah.
Scheduled, we'll, we'll plan on it this.
Okay.
You're, you're speaking the six o'clock meeting.
Yes.
Do you mean with the ad hoc team, or do you mean just us?
I think it honestly depends how far we get.
Okay.
I think that what we can do is use this as a, a standing meeting, moving forward in some aspect, and if we can have additional members join us, great, if not, then we can meet everybody in January. Is that good?
And then I think in January, we'll actually look at, um, going to a two-night meeting for the comp plan.
Yeah, we'll see what, what, and, and sometimes that goes in cycles, sometimes we're, if we're doing a lot of researching stuff, we don't need two meetings a month, and other times, two meetings a month might not seem like enough, because we're starting to really dig into stuff.
But it would be nice to schedule that, you know, to, to get that one to schedule, and if we need it, it's there, if not, we, we don't.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the remainder of your weekend.
Yes.
So, do you have any sense of this, you, you, this room on a very, very regular basis? Something that has no need for the last.
The other door.
Month, I would like to present to you a funnel, double doors.
I don't know how many times I keep trying to open that door.
I know, people, I walk into it like, come on, I'm gonna, so Wilson and Dee came in, just got it all fixed, cleaned up, now it works.
Do, do you know how long it took us to get those doors to open out?
Yeah.
When I started on council, they opened in.
Yeah, we looked at that, the old hinges opened in. And then, I think since they opened out, they, they didn't quite function right. The way they were beveled, they hit, and they couldn't, you couldn't do it.
They didn't.
So, we got it fixed.
Make the change there.
It's the little things in life, isn't it? These are the things that make my day.
I mean, I call for an hour, yeah.
Jess, I will send you.
Thank you.
The electronic link.
You have a see you all next month?
Yes.
You have a see.
This was another study I finished. Now, that feels.
Okay, put that on your file.
No, I, I have it electronically, so like I said to Jess, I'm going to send it to electronic.
Or you can upload it to the, do you have access to the?
No.
Okay.
I'm not good with that.
Oh, you will be. I think I saw a copy, that's either electronically or in our.
It does identify for, you know, this area, there was not a different.
No, maybe.
It's, it's from, this one is from Harrisburg to the.
Oh, this is the full.
Just kind of rivers, well, yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
I'm saying, the more you dig, the more you realize there's a lot of good stuff out there.
On that committee, too.
We're in the River Towns focus area.
Yeah. Which helps understand how we kind of form some of the things that we have currently in place, and why are they there, and why they're important to maintain.
And then I had also asked Jess about MS4, if that was going to be part of our documentation, and she said yes.
Absolutely.
Because she identified that there. See, when you called me back yesterday, this is what I was working on, throwing all this stuff together.
It's pretty easy.
Yeah, I thought that, too.
Sure, do you have a, um, HDMI port? Yeah, we can plug in that, that'd probably be easier.
Not sure I am on here, too.
Okay, sometimes it's the best people that show up 15 seconds from closing.
I think I can reach to there, otherwise I'll trade seats, but then you can sit here, because our cable's only so long.
Hi, I'm all right. How are you? Are you staying busy?
Yes, sir. I'm going to keep up.
Okay, the bell tolls, so at seven o'clock, I will call to order the October 20th meeting of Columbia Borough Planning Commission. Could we please stand for a moment of silent prayer? Amen, pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can make sure your mic is on there, too.
I would just like to note that we are down two members this evening. Tiffany and Brad are a bit under the weather, they were going to try joining us remotely, but that is not happening either. Uh, do I have a motion regarding the September 15th minutes, as in your packet? This is for both the work session and the planning commission meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Justin, who I have second.
I'll second.
Second is from Annette, any comment?
Are these, am I looking at this right? Is it, mine's dated August 15th?
Yeah, that's what's, that's what was in the, the new packet.
But the one.
The, what was in.
The old packet is September.
It's September, yeah, because I, I noticed the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
The ones that were on.
They are different.
The ones on the table were from August.
Yeah.
The ones that came in the envelope were from September.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's for your, um.
For our five.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got you.
But the minutes we're looking at are the ones that were in our packet for the 15th.
Okay.
I have a question about that. The, um, on page two, down towards the end, two, three, for the fifth paragraph, Jay Boring, or the EMO, EMO officer, it says that, um, he gave us a copy of, he provided the commission with an overview, did we all get a copy of that? Because I don't remember seeing that.
I, it was sent out electronically, if you want, I can forward it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, because I was actually going through things on my laptop and found it there in my Word document, so.
I would like that, because I have everybody else's, um.
Okay.
That would work.
No problem. Following those comments, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes are approved. This past month, the zoning hearing, um, was to be for the 313 Walnut Street and 175 Pleasant Avenue. 313 Walnut Street did happen, they did receive their variance for the first floor commercial back of a residential. But the 175 Pleasant Avenue was continued until the 28th of October, so I will still plan on attending that meeting. Okay, we have no special discussion, we will move on to 320 North Second Street, Columbia Reduction Company, and this has already been reviewed by Mike's County Planning Commission. And Derek is here this evening. So, do we want to hear from Derek first?
Might as well let Brent.
Okay, we will let Brent go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Matt, Brent's good with the LA group. This is the Columbia Mini Storage Subject Final Subdivision and Lot Add-on Plan. And 320 North, um, site is located here on North Second Street, in this location. Uh, it is owned, uh, General Industrial, and so it is a permitted use of the, the two sites. If I go to the existing conditions plan, uh, basically, uh, to the north is the metal recycling facility, Reduction, as it's called, about five acres, and the existing mini storage, about two acres. And the, the subject area of interest is that this existing office that was built in 2019. Uh, if we go to the Lot Add-on Plan, uh, it's a matter of removing, uh, 1.119 acres here, basically 47 by 110 feet along North Second, uh, in the industrial zone, and adding that, taking that away from the Reduction Company property, Lot Two, as we're calling it, and adding it to Lot One. The reason I call this one, uh, Lot One and Lot Two, that reflects a previous, uh, land development subdivision plan that was recorded, uh, prior. So, that is, um, what, uh, the two owners are willing to, uh, to do, work out a, a deal where this owner, uh, gives up this piece and, and gives it to this owner of the mini storage. And this is the, would be the primary office for the manager here of the, for the mini storage. The, the entrance exists here, uh, coming, uh, near Poplar Street intersection. There's a, there's a entrance here to the, uh, mini storage facility. In terms of, uh, kind of what that looks like. Excuse the finger there in the beginning, I'm going to talk to photograph, but it's a pretty nice building. Uh, it used to be, uh, like a temporary mobile home, or a mobile office, I should say, uh, facility. A little better shot here, uh, with the, uh, five parking spaces, one ADA space, uh, relatively level. Uh, again, the, uh, the office is here, and then to, to the left side, here would be that main entrance to the mini storage. Derek has provided a comment letter dated October 14th, has, uh, four comments. Probably the most concerning comment is the zoning comment, uh, where the building setback requirements do not appear to be met. And I was focusing on the, the new office that was built in 2019. You can see here, it's probably a foot, or maybe a little more, uh, as far as, uh, violation, if you would, into the front yard setback. We had gained, as I understand, the, the owner through, uh, builder, had gained the necessary building permit and permit plans through the borough, and then occupancy permit, uh, for that building. And so, uh, as far as I know, that building was built to the, to the approval of the, of the borough, uh, and gained the necessary permit for that building, but.
So, sorry, but, but does it meet the side and rear setbacks for the new lot lines?
It does.
Okay.
Uh, 10 foot is the side yard, in fact, it's set right on there, and it's, Justin, it's, it's in a logical location. Um, if you, if you go out on site, there's two bollards here, and in fact, the sidewalk does a little jog in this location, and so it's a very logical location, but it does meet that side yard.
Okay.
And then, uh, technically, uh, this, I believe, is also considered a side yard as, as it continues to go around, uh, the property in this location. Uh, but otherwise, uh, I believe the other buildings meet those setback requirements. I will say that existing buildings here are also non-conforming. They're, as I understand, quite a bit older, uh, older industrial buildings that have been there for quite some time that are very close to the, the street line. As you can see, the front yards up at least 15 feet. So, that's the, um, probably the most concerning comment. The, the remainder are very, I would say, more administrative in nature. I will say that, um, number three, I did call Derek for clarification on this, and, uh, we did check this out, and we, uh, let me go to, we just looked at this to update it. The, the newly revised plan, and I'm about to resubmit this to you again, and to Derek to verify, but Derek wanted us to put in here, update this area of the zoning data, where what is required, and then what applies to Lot One and Lot Two, as far as what has been proposed. And in this case, the impervious lot coverage is, the closest, uh, calculation to look at for Lot One, the impervious coverage would be 84, almost 85%, 90 is your max. Lot Two is 88.38%, everything else, and that is compliant, as you can see. So, that was based on his number three comment there under the Saldo. The other one is a note for survey note number one, and number two is just a matter of executing the certificates. So, the question is, as to number one, um, whether or not, um, we can gain conditional approval from you based on that, uh, this, in a sense, was, the building was built in 2019 with approvals through the borough, uh, just like the other buildings on this Lot Two, or what would be called existing non-conforming, uh, buildings in the setback, front yard setback.
Can you go back to the, uh, concept drawing you have, showing the locations of the new building that went in?
That's an actual photograph.
That's the actual.
Yeah, they, they, they exist.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, that little office building was built after the storage units were already there?
It was built prior to this plan, obviously, because it was last year it was built. So, they, those storage units were already there.
So, did they build an office on the adjacent property for the storage units?
Yeah, and I don't know all the details of that, but they built, they built the office, you know, it would've been, again, I, you have the zoning permit, but I, I would assume that, that the current, or previous owner, the current owner, actually, because we're still trying to get. because we're still trying to get this plan recorded, the current owner would've had to build that office, and now he's going to give that to the new owner.
The current owner built the office for the storage unit?
That's my understanding.
On his own property?
Yep.
And now he's going to give it?
Well, I don't know what's going to be.
It's going to be transferred.
It's going to be transferred. With office in the land, will be transferred to the mini storage.
Okay.
Because this, this was to us for demolition, for removal
Okay.
of the trailer that was out there. And then this had to go to zoning. It went to HARP. I know it went to HARP because of the historic history. Because they had to get approval from HARP to put that there. So I, like he said, that's, that's not even there a year, I don't think.
Was it, did it get a final certificate?
Yep.
It must've been CO, Brent.
Yep.
So to me, and Brent said all this up to me, I've been going through it. Because we're not adding a new building, and this is an existing, and you went the same way as I did, is if, in creating the law, we're not increasing or adding to a non-conformity, so the boundaries we're putting around this will be compliant with the existing structure. I think we have to put, I would be comfortable recommending and approving this with the idea that we acknowledge that these are existing non-conformities that exist on this site today. Because it was approved, it was built under a permit.
Well, the fact, the fact that it encroaches the front yard setback is immaterial to the, or the subdivision plan is immaterial to the fact that it encroaches the front setback.
That's right.
Yeah. But like you're saying, you can't create an encroachment by drawing a new property line.
Right.
You have to get a variance for that. But in this case, if they meant, if it meets both the sides, or the side of the rear, whatever it is.
The front, the front yard setback is equivalent, no matter whether you keep it as one lot or whether you switch.
Right, it exists today, no matter what we do.
Yeah, what we want to scrutinize here would be that side, side setback, which, which is accurate.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's, you said it's right on the line, the best that you can identify, then.
Yeah, we had a survey with the new building. And that's what we're looking at in the drawing.
And keep up the drawing that shows the, yeah, there you go. So the office space, that shows the full office with the roof overhang and everything?
That's my understanding.
Oh, that's the roof.
So if you look at it that way, if you go back to the image, the roof overhang, so if that, if that office outline is showing not the footprint, but the full.
Is that what it is? That's the overhead?
Might be.
That, I mean, I can see.
Yeah.
That's even less concerning to me.
Right.
If the footprint.
Than the basic structure.
But again, we're not creating this non-conformity. It exists, and without going too far, it.
I probably would've measured it from the corner of the building if I was the one that went up to get.
And maybe it is. Maybe that's how they surveyed it, is from the corner, corner, but I think it's,
it's existing now, and it was approved by the borough, so I say, I feel fairly comfortable moving forward, allowing Lot Add-on to occur.
But that is a good catch, though.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, because, I mean, I guess whether that would be the zoning officer's ultimate call or whatever.
It is a nice looking building. You can see it went through HARP.
Steel roof and everything else, you can tell. Absolutely, yeah, so.
So I guess I'm looking, if that's okay to proceed, I would ask for a recommendation for conditional approval based on satisfying the rest of the comments.
Yeah, so this is just a lot, a land transfer of this fraction, not, no land development or any building?
Correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan contingent on the borough engineers' subdivision land development ordinance comments.
And Mary, when I add also the county comments, there was two. One is to create deeds, and the other one is to add files to the LCPC file number. That letter stated September 29.
Right. Should, should we attach a timeline to, to record the new deeds after the plan is recorded? Just so they don't get lost? Or, say 30 days? To record the deeds after the plan is recorded?
About 60, just to make sure, you know, sometimes.
Okay, so let's just restate the motion then, how's that?
Yes.
To approve the preliminary final subdivision plan contingent on the township, or the borough engineers' subdivision land development ordinance comments, and the county planning commission's comments, and to attach a deadline of 60 days to record the deeds after the subdivision plan is recorded.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, Annette. And I am not going to repeat that because, because Justin knows how to do those types of motions. That we sound very professional.
He's done it a few times.
Yeah, that's true.
No, I think it's a good project, and.
Yeah.
There's no reason.
It's too exciting this time, but, you know, sometimes you have that, right?
Yeah, so you've heard the motion. We have a motion from Justin, second from Annette. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
This one was less interesting than a hotel.
Still working on that one, still working. We'll be back.
Yeah, well, that's what Don keeps telling me, we'll be back.
He keeps telling me.
Oh, yeah.
He keeps telling you too.
Oh, yeah. Just a bit.
So, 1200 Locust Street will be coming back at a future date.
Yeah.
In November? They will be back in November.
So just a quick, so you guys are up to speed on this. When, I think your shop, or the county caught it, there are three parcels out there, and when we did the rezoning back in December.
Yep.
The ordinance only referenced two of the three. So the one that's on 12th, the back piece, the woodlot, if you will, back in the corner, did not get rezoned, and then 1200, the old pool, and 1300, the smaller lot up in the corner, did get rezoned. So in order for them to move forward with their full development, we have to, they're going to have to process a rezoning for that last piece in the bottom. So that is, the land development plan is going to be on hold, and then they're coming back in November for recommendations for rezoning. So that's, that's what happened there, and it's one of those things that it got mixed, we caught it now, and they're going to have to move forward and get it done.
Yeah, we discussed, instead of them having, instead of them coming tonight, knowing that there wasn't really anywhere for them to go, and they had to come back for your recommendation of rezoning, come on back in, do the, do the rezoning request, and while you're here, give the planning commission a briefing of the plan. They've, they've already made a resubmission, and we're pretty clean as far as the engineering review goes, so the hope would be that they can get through the rezoning, and then the first PC after the rezoning would hopefully go through. They'll be back here for conditional approval, so.
And they've already been through, well, they were, they were through county planning.
They've been, yeah, they've been through county planning, and, and they've been through two reviews of mine, so.
So we have, we have committed to expedite the rezoning through the system as efficiently as we can.
And I'm told the, there will be no November zoning hearing, that it will be December 2nd.
Yes.
You don't want to do one night before Thanksgiving?
No.
Those are fun.
Fun is one word, not the one I would choose.
Yes, we did.
I'll, I'll, I'll say this, Deb gave me the what for and said, we're not doing that again. I said, oh, no, we are not. And, and we all agreed, even, we wrote to Giselle Cleary, our attorney for the board, and she's like, oh, she wrote back within seconds, yes!
Looking for the other answer.
So I, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that Deb had given me a heads up. I come in the Wednesday before these meetings, and Deb and I possibly mark a piece of air and pull over and set the agenda.
Gotcha.
So.
See, you're the puppet master.
Where do we stand with the 500 block of Locust, the zoning hearing that was supposed to happen there? Why can't I think of the address? 523, 522? Is that still in limbo? That's the property that was a three unit that was never approved to be a three unit.
Yeah, and they, they, the ones that put that extra unit in there were, come back and get it verified, and we looked it up, and we're like, no, it's never been approved to be a three unit.
So I was wondering where that's, that's one of those.
Yeah.
That's been hanging out there that never came back.
Yep.
So I will be going to the zoning hearing on the 28th regarding 175 Pleasant Avenue.
You're a saint, Mary.
I went, I went back.
Just going to zoning hearing for meetings.
I actually went back. If you recall, Mike Robb did not attend our planning commission meeting last month. He was not well, but he did send letters regarding that property in the 313. Well, I went back to him because in the letter he sent for that evening, for our last meeting, he said that we had recommended approval of 175 Pleasant Avenue. And I went back and dug our minutes out, and went back to him, I said, we sent that to zoning with no recommendation, because that's when they wanted to put two units in there. And now they're just doing the warrants, so I went back, I said, no, we did not, we made no recommendation, but for this one, we did, we felt it was perfect, so. Just, just to follow up on that. Do we have any further business this evening?
If you haven't had a chance, and you would like a tour of the progress in the market house, please let me know. I love serving as construction manager, tour guide over there. The guys get sick of it every time I walk over. But if you want to see where, where it's going, the floor is being laid now. If you didn't realize, they pulled up all the old brick floor, repalated it all.
Really?
They put concrete in where the market stands are going and where the seating area is, and then they're relaying the old brick now as the pathway around.
The aisles.
The aisles. It looks phenomenal.
So do you want to give us a tour now, since it's just 7:30?
You know, let me go see, I'll get my key and go over, we can go over and look at it now, if you guys want to take a quick little.
Well, we will adjourn our meeting.
You get it? Let me go get.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion from Barb. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
And Annette, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:30.